This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. The meeting is available by GoToMeetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Their motion to approve the agenda.
I move to... Oh, go ahead, Jim.
No, that's fine, Pam. I'll do the second.
Okay, I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
And made a motion, Jim second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting. I know there was a lot of corrections on there, so I want to get the updated one.
Make a motion to approve the March 18th meeting.
I'm sorry, Ann Clay, I'm sorry. Mark, I do have a question on the claims. Greg, can you maybe speak to the $125 Osage Park and Rec sponsor of the ball team?
Yeah, so since I've been sheriff for a large part of the time that I've been sheriff, I'll get requests to support youth activities throughout the county. And the Osage Little League, E-wee, whatever they're called nowadays, have requested in the past and again this year, support, $125 in support. I think it goes to buy T-shirts and whatever those little sports need to do what they do on their Tuesday night or whatever it is in Osage. So certainly support those kids in the county. And I know that I've also supported Central Springs District. Some of our students go that way. And I've had requests from them in the past for the same type of sport and certainly support those kids going that way. So, you know, as those requests come in, whether it's Riceville, St. Ansgar, you know, certainly take a look at it and try to support them as best I can.
Okay.
I need the requests, though. They can't just call me and say, "I need a check. I need something." That we have a paper trail on and the reason for the support and what it might be going for. So that would be the $125 claim that you see, Pam.
Okay.
Goes to support those little ears.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that, Greg.
You bet.
Okay, Mark made a motion. Todd second. Any other further discussion?
We're called Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes. County attorney is here.
We've got a couple of things. One, we got that opioid excel that emailed yesterday, I think. The one from last week, the one from yesterday. I don't need to do anything with that, all right?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. So I don't think I will. Then regarding the other one from last week, I emailed you about where they were suggesting maybe we disjoin a certain park, a certain claim. I didn't do anything. I didn't withdraw. I just... They... They didn't give anybody any time to think about it. As I read through that stuff, I kind of thought, and I don't... I mean, this is a good firm, I don't... But it's a class action lawsuit. And I don't do class action lawsuits, but they got a little reading knowledge, I guess, of how they work. I just didn't see that it made any sense to withdraw from. They're the ones that asked us to join. And I don't talk about the whole thing. I'm just talking about the part. They're the ones that asked us to join. And then apparently it looks like the judge is saying, "No, no, no, no. Now you got too many people that want to be a part of it. Somebody's got to get them." And then they're asking small counties to get them. And I just thought, "Why? Why should we do it?"
Thank you.
So... Exactly. So I didn't withdraw. I didn't say, you know, that's what they were wanting. I didn't do that. So I'll give you an update on that. That's all I got.
Aaron, I just want to ask. I like that way you clarified that, but every time we get those and I read through them, they're... To me, they're very confusing. I mean, very. And they're wrong. Yeah, that's right. So with the amount of money we are getting, money's money. Don't get me wrong. I just want to ask you and Ann Rachel, is it worth continuing on?
Well, you know, it's worth it because, I mean, I can't speak for Rachel. Rachel probably spends more time on it than I do because she has to monitor the money. As far as the time I spend on it, not that much. If we... If the county gets a few thousand dollars a year, I don't mind doing what I do. I can't speak for Rachel. Like I said, she may put more time into it because she has to monitor finances. It wouldn't be worth it if you had to go out and pay an attorney to do it, but, you know...
You kind of understand that...
I just have to do, I don't remember if it's quarterly or yearly reporting, but we had it set up in the system that we can just run it for that fund and it's pretty easy to do, so.
You're just running a ledger account, posting from the opioid account, right?
And then there's like five pages of paperwork to fill out, so... But if it was monthly, I'd probably be more annoyed, but it's not, so it's not terrible.
So just continue, I guess. And, okay, thank you.
Did they want every city under 50,000 to drop out? Because that's only... There's only 11 cities in staying in Iowa and that's 50,000 people.
That's right.
So they would get all the money and the other county cities would get none?
I... That... Yeah, I mean, yeah, when you do that math, you can see that they're asking everybody but the big guys to drop out. Now, they said in that email that there, if you withdrew, the anticipation was smaller counties would still share the money. Well, that's one thing to say. Yeah, you're still going to get your money. That's another thing to say. Yeah, we think you will. It's kind of our plan, so... Which is kind of what they said. So I just thought... It's no use just giving him. I don't...
And it funds some of our programs, so I... I appreciate that.
Anything else for Aaron? We'll move on to sheriff update.
So I have a whole lot. Money continues to roll in for a paid night, so there's a lot of support for that. I appreciate everybody that's supported that. I have been in touch with a representative from Summit Carbon. They are starting to do some surveying in the southwest part of our county. Asked him what that looks like when a surveying crew shows up. How does that... How will I know? He says typically what they do is they have some type of GPS receiver system that may be deep in the road ditch and somebody walks the field with a GPS handheld device, and that's how they survey. So it's not a big buildup of equipment. It's not trucks driving on our producer's fields, but it is somebody walking through a... I do get calls. People don't want them on their farmland. And so you folks might be getting calls too in regards to that. So just a heads up. In the southwest part of our county is where they're starting, so...
So they are allowed to be on the road?
I'll add to that. I've been doing it for work, too.
Yeah.
So I made contact because I've been getting the calls too by law. They're supposed to have a license, the Iowa surveyor supervising that. I made contact with some that do. They are using Iowa licensed surveyors to oversee these... Some of these surveyors are from out of state, but they've got direct supervision from an Iowa licensed surveyor, so they're allowed to be in the roadway.
Okay.
If they're out in private property fields, then I'm assuming that they've got permission to be out there with their rovers and everything else that are probably just doing a total survey of the area and elevations and deaths. But as far as in the right of way...
Right, they're allowed to be on the road, but not necessarily walking in the field.
Now they're all concerned or...
Right, right. So...
I'd like to add to that now. Yes, they're out there, but I also want to... Amanda Vanguard, do you ever get any calls on them? They're all out around the countryside now, too. I think there's three of them that were just working for the assessor's office on reevaluating rural buildings and stuff. So make sure if, you know, that's three strange vehicles. I think there's three of them out there that we want to make sure that if they don't... The landlords don't think they're part of the survey team, so we kind of have to make sure we keep them separated. But I think the vehicles are say Vanguard aren't, so...
Well, the surveyors are supposed to be marked vehicles also.
Okay.
Right.
So just so we kind of make sure we, if somebody calls us and all of a sudden it's a Vanguard vehicle, because I think they can go right on the farm site.
Correct, correct.
Assess the...
Yeah, the assessor vehicles, yeah.
Just got a lot going on in Mitchell County, so...
But if they're again, maybe just to get out the word to the public that if they ask and, you know, they're coming into the yard, because if those assessors, I thought, were out assessing the buildings other than houses, you know, shops, sheds, outside buildings like that. And I may be incorrect in that, so I don't want to definitely state that. But if you would ask them, they would certainly tell you that, I would imagine, that they would tell you that that's what they were there for, that they were doing an assessor review that, what is it, every, how many years that there, that there, is it five, 10?
Five, I think.
Yeah, yeah. That they're doing their periodic assessment of those. And they should have that. But yeah, that's a good point.
Rich, do you recall with the... You said that they're going to be marked on their trucks?
Well, I meant just reports of, I can't remember what the initials were on some of the vehicles. One was out over... There's, I don't remember what the actual names...
Are they all the same or are they...
No, I think there was at least, I was told that from the email I got from North County yesterday, there are at least two different names.
Okay, it's all right.
And there may or may not be individuals from the windmill companies around too, just visiting with people. So you're right, there's a lot going on.
It's spring, and we'll have road construction going on.
Yeah. Don't forget those tractors on the road either.
So that's all I have for this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Department head discussion.
Hi, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'll just go over a few things with you quickly. We'll start with annoying. I was supposed to get the schedule for the copier yesterday. It never showed up. I'll have to forward that to you once I get that. Told me it was going to get it, but it just ended up not showing up. As far as the phone updates, I've been talking with Iowa IT about kind of the strategy that we're going to do going forward. I did discuss with them the fact that public health is obviously the most... We've talked to this a lot, that public health is most important. He did say that we can move each of our direct dial numbers individually. It's not necessary for all of those to change at once. Internally, extensions you have to, but like public health has a different phone number than the courthouse. So we could move just public health's number and not the courthouse, so we could get them going a bit faster. And that's my goal. Right now, it's working on the servers to get that set up and then contacting OMU to try to schedule a cutover from going to our current system to the next system. So that's where I'll start out. From there, then, it'll be just to knock it off the list, any of the smaller remote sites, something like secondary roads. So then the focus can be entirely on the courthouse once we start the courthouse, because that'll be the largest amount of phones being changed at the same time. I've been working over at the sheriff's office on a new computer for Emily. After a firmware upgrade on the firewall I did yesterday, it is fully functional. The big thing was the VPN connection for her going from, obviously remotely, we know what a VPN is. That was kind of a dry run for some of the updates that we were going to do in the future over at the sheriff's office and don't have to go into details on that. So with her functional, I'm going to wait another couple of days to see if something else doesn't, you know, pop up. But then I feel comfortable with doing it for the rest of the computers in the department. Oh, and this was one I sent to you in the email about the Osage Police Department. I had a request from Sarah at the Osage Police Department, and this has happened one time before, to come over and take a look at one of their servers, which helps with the cruisers in their vehicle. I did that last time. It took like an hour. I just did it for a courtesy thing. It wasn't a big deal. But this time, I actually found out a little bit more information that I was over there. I talked with Solutions and they were able to just give me all the information for the Osage Police Department. So they gave me complete administrator access to all of their equipment. I didn't know that that existed, and I was kind of surprised that that was provided for me. But it seems that the previous IT director and then Casey, mostly Casey, had done all of that server work over at the Osage Police Department. So the installation purchasing was all done by the IT director of Mitchell County, and that was new. So as I was looking through it, I was on the sheriff's network and I found that I actually have direct connection into the Osage Police Department from our network. So I think it might make sense to have an agenda item on this because we're going to have to come up with a way for that relationship if they want me to provide support for their systems, which they didn't with the previous IT director. They decided not to go that direction. But we'll need some sort of agreement between us and the police department, how that's going to work. Previously, I talked to Casey about it, and he said it was a gentleman's agreement that they would charge an hourly rate that's equal to his hourly rate to the police department. And that's how they handled it in the past. I don't necessarily have a problem with it. My biggest concern is it being connected to our network and then what the expectation is on the county side and on the PD side. I just think some sort of actual piece of paper would help with confusion on that whole situation. So that's something, I guess, the relationship between us two and how it worked for me to provide support really is the crux of the whole situation. So that's why I thought I... There's multiple ways you can handle this. I just didn't know if the board might have had any opinion or questions on the Osage Police Department connection.
So they're going to be, they have access to our network. Who of them would have access to our network?
Anyone who would have administrator access to their network. But they wouldn't, they'd be able to see it. They can't do anything.
Okay.
So that, I should have clarified that. They can see each other, which you don't want, but there's no actual data being transferred through the two. It's just kind of surprising that I can even see it.
Yeah, that's surprising.
So that's where my concern was at with... But I don't think it's a security concern. It's just more of a best practice, kind of why do they even need to see this, so...
An agreement? Was that, is that something that you would draw, huh?
Yeah, I've already been in contact with ICET. There's a couple of the Cassuth County I've talked to has a similar setup situation with their police department where he provides support. They use a formula for the amount of money based on the number of users, which I can present that way to do it, or there's just the straight, you know, hourly payment from there. But it's not uncommon for counties to do this.
Are you comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it as long as we have something written down that has those expectations and it not be, you know, that'll be good for both of us. So that's really what I want, is that, it's not a contract, I don't want to say that word, but an agreement between the two departments to, you know, set expectations. Yes, sir.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you know, we've talked a lot about our standard operating procedures in IT and other departments and things, so this would be in line with that and our sustainability process, you know, as far as backup, should there be any kind of emergency. So that would all then be further clarification, documentation of that agreement. So I, yeah, I can see why you'd need to have an agreement in place.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Run, make sure Aaron's part of the thing, part of the process too, so he can at least look at it and see if there's a big red flag or something. You okay with that?
Yeah, I am. And I can offer my services for IT, dude. I'm just joking. I know, not, you know, Greg, you got to have it. I'd be happy to look at it because you are right that you want... It's kind of like if I go out to a buddy's house and he starts asking me legal stuff, it's like, "Am I like on the hook here for something, if I'm wrong?"
Exactly.
Or just friendly conversation, you know, and so that's kind of like why you want, so, yeah, I'd be happy.
Okay, great.
So do you want it on next week or you want...
Yeah, next week would be great. I want to get at least something preliminary, especially since I have access and they gave me all the passwords. It kind of makes me nervous. I'm kind of uncomfortable with it, honestly, but...
Is that one good enough? Is that timeline enough for this agreement to be put in place and for Aaron to look at it? Or, I mean, we can always tape it.
Yeah, let's just try, because I want to get it at least at some point for this, you know, just kind of give it me hives.
Okay. Just food for thought, doesn't St. Ansgar still have a police department? Or do they go through the dispatch here in Osage?
St. Ansgar still has a police officer, one police officer currently.
Do they have a police station?
Yep.
I mean, would that, would that be part of, I mean, in Mitchell County? I don't know if...
Well, the thing about the Osage PD, which attaches us anyway, is they use our shieldware, the software for the sheriff's office. They use ours. They piggyback off our licenses. So they're connected to us differently than, say, St. Ansgar would be because they don't have that connection already.
Can you communicate with St. Ansgar?
Yeah, sure. I don't know of a good contact.
Right, I mean, you guys, you communicate back and forth in a situation?
Oh, yeah, definitely do. And we dispatch for St. Ansgar. And so their calls for service are entered in our system, just like Osage, we dispatch from the city of Osage. We need to be able to continue to share information between Osage Police Department, Fire Department, and our office. We share a lot of data and records and arrest information, booking information. We can see their calls for service. We can't edit those and vice versa. They see our activity. You know, sometimes there's a lot, officer alerts, or be on the lookout for people that are interviewed to that type of system, so they can access the data. They can see that information. That will need to continue, yeah, are the reasons they're on our network. That show or program allows that. St. Ansgar's not on that system. It certainly can't be, but there's a cost to all of that. It's a cost for a lot of small communities. But, you know, Mitchell County dispatches for all the services in the county respire U.S. Any other questions? I have one. Ryan did this, and Rachel did that. I'm quoting, get a hold of me there on you yesterday or in... He's our G.I., our GIS monuments are being updated. Oh, okay. I gave you guys information. I didn't know we contacted you. It's going to be an expensive, or rather, the NAD 83 system, and it's going to be upgraded, I think, to the NAPGD 2022 system.
Okay, let me...
So remember that long and everything else on the monuments are going to be updated.
Okay, sounds good, yeah.
I'll be supposed to get in contact with you and give you information.
Well, it's good to have that background. Okay, cool. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Morning, Amanda.
Hi.
Good morning. Welcome back.
That's why I'm here. I'm back. So I don't know if anybody has anything to talk to me specifically about, but my office is now officially open, back up and running through myself. We hit the ground running pretty much yesterday. It was a lot to take in. There's a lot going on in the county, like previously stated. So I'm going to be working pretty diligently throughout my office within the next couple of weeks on the zoning side and the environmental side. They're both pretty heavily busy right now, so... But does anybody have anything to address or any questions for me or anything?
So you could maybe clarify your next planning and zoning meeting?
Yeah, so the next planning and zoning meeting is going to be on April 2nd. There is no public comments being taken at this meeting. I'm currently in the process of making the agenda for that, and I will be in contact with my zoning commission. I have some things that I need to review before I can send them an official packet and the agenda and everything. But I did talk with Sidney yesterday pretty heavily on everything that has come to fruition throughout my time being away. And again, I'm going to hit the ground running on that pretty much. I will be submitting another news article to the paper here today for the follow-up meeting from that meeting on, it'll be on April 14th at 6:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. There will be no public comments taken at that meeting either, so...
Is there a reason why there are no public comments?
Because in reference to the ordinances, the, when the ordinance gets passed onto you guys, that is their opportunity for the public to come and make public comments. My zoning commission is a reviewing committee, and I don't feel at that time they need to be taking public comments when you guys are the ones who are going to be handling the situation of the public comments and taking the public hearings with the ordinance. So that's why.
Give a time on the meeting inspection.
6:00 p.m.
Six?
Yep, both ways.
And both of them are down here in this office?
In this room, yep. Yep.
Been hold, been in touch with my...
I emailed him this morning, and I emailed him about two separate topics, which I can talk to you about probably a little bit later, but I want him to get back with me. I have to review some things from him and then possibly move forward on something else, but, yeah.
You'll be aware of these meetings?
I made him aware of the meetings in the email today. So I'm hoping that he comes to the April 2nd meeting, so that way if they have questions, they can address him specifically since he was the one who drafted it.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Rich, you got three minutes.
Three. All right, so just as some maintenance things, we're looking at possibly they start and work on some of those two indigo bridges, those pipes that were laying out there all winter. Maybe try to start with them this week, next week, or the following week, depending on weather. I had turned my budget and program into the DOT for review. That's the system they want to do now. They want to approve it before I bring it to you guys. I have everything ready to go. We haven't approved our budget here for the county yet, and my county mirrors that, so I'm going to hold off. But I did have, I had to unlock mine so I can resubmit it to the DOT for the budget, or that means the program, because Howard County has a bridge they want to do in 2030. It's on county line. We have to pay for part of it, so I put that back into the program. So I'll have to figure out funding for that, but that's 2030. So I got a call last week, or email last week about our new trucks, with the new tariffs thing coming down the pipeline. We maybe having tariffs on our trucks because, or increased costs due to steel tariffs and things like that. So it was just kind of forewarning me. We were trying to get into an earlier build so we wouldn't have tariffs, but those slots filled up before I could even get the email back to them. We could see about $3,500 per truck more. We're not sure, not positive, that it's possible. And after that, they don't know if there's a cap. So as I said, put the trucks in the earliest build you can get so we can get them here and not pay the extra fees. Next week, I'll have a professional service agreement for our bridge inspections. I kind of warned you guys about that here a few weeks ago. Going to be expensive. If you remember, the last bridge we did over on 105 there, that ended up being a six-figure inspection. It's going to be similar, but we got two bridges this time, so it's going to be a little bit more expensive. The staff I have is going to be kind of limited on their capabilities based on experience and health. So we're going to need their help to get this, these projects built, and they're all federal aid, so we want to make sure we get it done right. So I'll bring that to you. We're looking at, just as an example, just so you guys can swallow this, a not-to-exceed fee of $176,000 and change.
That's one and two.
Two bridges for the duration of both projects. One is 70 working days, one is 110 working days. So that's a long span of time to be covering. Good thing is I've got somebody that's... Good thing is they've got somebody that's kind of local. The mileage kind of stayed low for them, but those are the fees we have to get in order to get these projects.
Is that survey first, laying out the structures, and is that field inspection?
This is field inspection, yes, because we tried this last time where we were doing all the documentation, where we were taking all their data and putting it in, and there was so much of a mess in that, it's easier for them to just take it and run with it. We'll still have Bill try to go out there and learn some things, but he's going to be limited on mobility, so.
Nine o'clock.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Contract administration also? Yes, okay.
I'm going to open the public hearing at nine o'clock for the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment. Any oral or written comments?
And none.
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 Rachel? None. All right. Any public discussion? All right. Close the public hearing at nine oh one. Back to Rich for your final.
Done, right?
Yep.
Okay. So then last week, we had bid lighting for paving around the truck route here and our federal aid bridge south of McIntyre. The apparent little bidder for our paving was Kroll, and they came in right around, I'm not going to give you numbers till next week, that we approve the project, but they came in around three hundred thousand under my estimate. So that was kind of a nice surprise there for funding. The bridge came in, we had estimated about one point four million for the total project, and that came in, I'm sorry, one point eight million, and it came in around one point three five, so. And that's federal aid and H B P money on that project. So I'll bring resolutions to approve those projects next week, so it'll be pretty good. A lot of things to look at next week.
So do we think we're going to be on the docket yet next week for, for our current project, working on our right of way? I know it's, it's, it's been, it's been a joint effort.
It's a, it's a.
And we still have to get.
Pretty heavy document, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's still plan on it.
We'll, we'll tentatively put it on the agenda next week.
There's a lot going on with that document, so.
Right, and if we think by the end of the week that won't fly, we'll notify Rachel to hold it for another week.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I'm not sure exactly the details of it. We're working on that document, but I will want to review it, run it, and just have it placed on the table, and then they expect it to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
It's that.
It's the right of way where we're working on, we're analyzing the current right of way for utilities that we have here in Mitchell County. Well, we call it a utility ordinance.
Right, and that's where I was getting confused, because I think it's more private utilities versus.
Right.
Code of Iowa utility.
It's utility ordinance or utility from that?
It's, it's kind of, right, yep. And so that's where, that's where I'm.
That's where we're.
That's where, I think that's where the, that's where the whole meat and potatoes is, and that whole thing is to say, okay, this is, this is what the ordinance says. So there's an ordinance that says you get permission with your utility in the right of way, but after you get permission from the board, then you also have to fill out a permit in order to actually do the work. And that's for, and what I think I was getting confused on most was that's for private utility work, not the utilities that are defined in the Iowa code as public utilities.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's where I met Jim with trying to figure out, what does our existing utility report tell us we can do? What is this?
Right.
Ordinance is going to, how do we merge those documents together? And then we were talking about also, do we, if we've got a work and a right of way permit, do we make one document for all utilities, all driveways, and anything else that fits between have one document versus we have a driveway permit? We have a utility permit, some other county that will work with a right of way permit, which covers everything else, we just make one document? And not have to worry about it. But in that document, we also include any fees that we're going to, you know, so there's a whole lot.
We have to reference those fees.
Yeah, about, of course.
Oh, we would send it out to all of you to review before.
But there's a lot going on.
The meeting, but because we're looking at what, what was previously more a utility permit kind of thing, and.
And when we say utility, that was the public utility is defined by the Iowa code.
Right.
But now I think this ordinance is.
Right.
Private utilities.
Maybe not necessarily, more inclusive, but we, we put it all together as opposed to having this one, this one, and this one. Other counties are doing the same thing. They're realizing they had maybe a rather outdated ordinance relating to their public utilities, and then, and then they didn't have anything for their fees, and so they're doing the same, same kind of thing. And so we're, we're trying to make sure we get all the eyes dotted and the t's crossed, but we absolutely would spread that on added meeting. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I would imagine all of them, all of us would want to see it.
Yeah, I can only speak for myself. I can't say that Todd needs to see it. No, I'm speaking for myself, so.
Yeah, no, that would absolutely be our intention, so that, I don't like having stuff sprung on me at the meeting either.
I got a couple of questions for you. So that bridge on County Line Road in twenty thirty, I've talked with you multiple times. The actual county line road is on the map for still twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
So. Yeah, so we're going to do that, and then in twenty thirty, we're going to tear that up and.
It's a bridge in the north part of, north of Riceville. That's Howard County's road to maintain. We've got the south, yeah.
Okay, so that, good, good. And then when you mentioned about inspection and stuff, is, do you still have Bill Spitz doing that?
Yeah.
And then does he still get in a truck and stuff?
He's allowed snow, but in the summertime, I use him for construction.
Okay.
We got like one.
So is, is that position still open?
You know, I keep it open, just, you know.
Okay.
Bill's not going to be here forever, and we need to kind of keep the door open for opportunities.
Okay. So do you ever have anybody stop in and ask about?
I have a couple times, yeah.
Okay. So the right fit? Okay. Because Bill is.
Yeah, I know, and I talked to Bill yesterday, because I don't want to get into his, into his private stuff, but he's not going to be as mobile this summer as we need him to be, so.
Yeah. We graduate together. I know. Okay, good, that's.
So we'll have help for him too.
Okay.
But, yeah, and, and his experience isn't going to relate to bridge building at all, so. I mean, that's why I want him out there to kind of learn, but it's, these are complicated projects, or at least the one. You start getting a three-span bridge and all this goes on with that, and it's different when you've got somebody that's been along around a long time and seen it all.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
So I wanted to move to number eight, approve appropriations resolution, resolution twelve seventy-two dash twenty-five. Whereas it is desired to make appropriations for the various departments as per the budget amendment at this time. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, that these changes be made in appropriations. Exponentials increase fifteen thousand to Sheriff Department, increase four thousand five hundred to Veterans Affairs Department, increase five thousand to the Medical Examiner Department, increase twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty to the I T Department, increase seven thousand to the Courthouse Department, increase five thousand to the non-departmental department. Revenues increase fifteen thousand to the Sheriff Department, increase twenty-three thousand to the Sanitation Department. Approve this twenty-fifth day of March twenty twenty-five. So our motion to approve resolution twelve seventy-two dash twenty-five.
Salute.
Do you have any motions or second?
I second.
I'm second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. Appoint Liberty Township Clerk. We have a resignation letter. I am resigning from the Liberty Township Clerk position as of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Jessica Smith.
So I have a question. Rachel, you sent an email and had, had the name of Sparta, Mike. Is that Mike Mayer, the supervisor that was here?
Yep, he happened to be upstairs when Jess came. So it has to be someone in Liberty Township. We talked, there's three meetings that they attend. Jess was kind enough. She did schedule the budget hearing, because Liberty is one of two townships that still has to do their budget meeting by April thirtieth. So they have to meet. They set their public hearing, and then they have the budgets. There's two meetings. So they did meet to do that, and then they're setting the budget. And that's going to be April first at, I think I wrote down, six thirty at Gerbs. So whoever appoints needs to be there, because the clerk's someone that ends up signing off on the paperwork. But they kind of talked through what it all involved, the Fire Department and the Cemetery stuff. So he offered that he would do it if you guys approve him. Otherwise, if not, we have to find someone else.
I just want to clarify which, which, not the nameless, so it's the supervisor we had before, okay?
Yep. All right. A motion to approve? No motion? To approve Mike Mayer for Liberty Township? Can I make one comment? If he is not approved, you guys have to go in and do that duty for until it's over.
I would be willing to do that next week for their meeting. I, I believe that there are a couple of other people that would possibly take that position. So if we need to table that until next week's meeting, if, you know, or, or the following, I, I can help out for the township meeting.
Thank you for that.
Guess it's dying from the flag of a motion. And again, let us know if you're going to put it on the agenda for next week, Pam.
Yes.
Thank you. Number ten, set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-six budgets. We have a date of April twenty-second at nine A M. Do you have a motion? To set the public hearing for our budget?
April twenty-second.
Move to prove that.
Do you have any motions or second?
I second it.
And second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm going to have that line turned in before April fifteenth, so you guys have to approve my DOT budget before that. They're going to work. As long as none of the changes come on the county side, yeah, I should be right.
As long as we don't pull the rug out from under you. Is that what you're saying?
Just had a couple expressions on your face.
Yeah.
He's like fear. Our audit ladies.
She's nodding.
We go way back.
My life to keep them the same, they're two different.
Oh, my gosh. That was too great.
Mine hasn't been turned in until state about the fifteenth, but you guys get a little bit, it's really silly how they do it. They give everybody.
Well, between the schools and the, it's crazy.
Well, they extended everybody else's except mine.
Okay. We have a review, our fiscal year twenty-four audit with Gardner and Company. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm great. How are you guys?
Good. We're excited.
We're excited.
How are you?
Exciting. So excited.
Rachel said that you guys wanted a lot of detail, because you've not had one of these exit conferences before, so.
No.
She said to give you the long version.
I brought lunch.
Did you bring lunch for everybody? So, yeah, this is the official exit conference for the audit of the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-four. And I just want to thank all of the elected officials and department heads, because first audits are always brutal. You can attest to that. Rich can attest to that. He had infrastructure that he got to update back from the beginning of time. I appreciate all of the effort that he. But it's a lot closer than what it, than what it was. So I just appreciate everybody working so well with my staff and getting to the point where we're able to issue this report prior to March thirty-first, so everything's going to be all filed and done with the State Auditor's Office. So I guess first, we could just go ahead and, well, I'm just going to walk you through what's included in the annual audit report book. And if you have questions, you know, we'll staff along with it along the way, and we'll address them at that point. So the audit is required by chapter eleven of the Code of Iowa. The counties are required to have an annual audit. So that's, you know, the purpose of why we're here. The purpose of an audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. A common misconception is that we're here to find fraud, or we're here to find errors or irregularities. Actually, that is not the purpose of the audit at all. It's to opine on whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented. The audit is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. And then we go ahead and do our fieldwork, and we will go ahead and reissue our opinion based on the results of that fieldwork. So for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-four, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is what you want to hear. That means we believe it's a clean opinion. We believe that the financial statements are fairly presented. Now, during the course of audit fieldwork, we did have, we did come across some material misstatements. So we had proposed adjustments that were made, so that all the transactions that we had. So if you open to page two, which is on auditor, it's on Gardner and Company letterhead, it's independent auditor's report. We go ahead and we give our opinion right, right up top, where we have gone ahead and we issued an unmodified opinion. Again, based on tests and samples. Again, we're providing reasonable assurance. This is not absolute assurance, because we're not looking at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. This letter also outlines the responsibilities of management for the financial statements. Ultimately, these are your financial statements. Ultimately, everything that we proposed for adjustments, Rachel had to approve. As we were going through with the departments, especially infrastructure with Rich, that's his infrastructure. He has to approve it. He had to prepare it. So all of the proposed adjusting journal entries were approved by county management. They are your financial statements. If you look to the next page, we have our auditor's responsibilities of the, for the audit of the financial statements. And our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance that they're fairly presented. We exercise professional judgment and skepticism throughout the course of the audit. It's a trust-but-verify type of situation. You know, we're, we're going to trust what your people tell us, but we're also going to verify that what they tell us is correct. We're looking in to assess the risks of material misstatement. As auditors, we were required to state our auditing standards number one forty-five this year, and it was a total revamp of how we assessed risk. Both you guys being a new client, we were starting at ground zero anyway. So both Rachel and Shannon had to fill out internal control questionnaires to kind of get a feel for who does what, what do you have for segregation duties, that type of thing, and then obtaining that knowledge of how things worked and what internal controls you had in place, that's what triggered, okay, how are we going to audit this? What are we going to test? What are we going to look at? And that kind of, our audit program then developed after that. We do also get audit programs from the State Auditor's Office. They do provide audit programs annually, things they want us to check and do. So we do utilize that as well. So we do obtain an understanding of the internal control that you have in place. We evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies that you've chosen to use. And then we conclude if there are any conditions or events that might cause substantial doubt about the county's ability to continue as a going concern. So those are our responsibilities throughout the course of the audit. We also look at your required supplementary information, your supplementary information that's included. And that will get us then to page six, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis. And before we go through this, I do want to skip ahead to page sixty-one. Page sixty-one, we did have to implement a new Government Accounting Standards Board statement for this audit for this year, and GASB one hundred is the correction of errors. And we ended up restating beginning balances for this audit. So, you know, during the course of the audit, we did become aware of several material misstatements. And so note number 16 just goes ahead and outlines all of the restatements we did to the beginning balance. Now, since this is a new audit for us, we do confirm all of the bank balances and all of the debt balances at June 30th of 2023 and of June 30th of 2024, so that we're confident we have a good starting point. So we go ahead and we verify those balances. Again, we're getting outside party confirmation of that. And so we're confident that the restatements that we're doing are appropriate. So the first restatement that we had is in regards to the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund. And GASB statement number 54 was approved several years ago where it changed the definition of a special revenue fund. And so the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund did no longer meet those requirements. And so GASB 54 instructed counties to place that as part of general. So in the previous audits, it had been included as a special revenue fund when really it should have been reclassified to be a general sub-fund. Or when you're looking at your, your budget and your cash and gap reports, it's in that general other column. That's where it should be presented. So we did go ahead and make a restatement to move that balance. And now that activity going forward will be presented as part of general fund. The second correction that we had, there was an economic development loan that was made to Mitchell County Economic Development for $300,000. This was previously included as a loan, I believe it was in the debt. And it was not included on the county's financial statements at all. So there was $300,000 of a note receivable that, you know, you may or may not choose to collect. But until that time comes, it needs to be presented as a note receivable. So that had not been happening. So we did go ahead and propose an adjustment to reclassify and to add that to your financial statements. The next correction that we had is in regards to the Carpenter Sewer Fund. We deal with Sarah Bordeaux County who has the exact same setup. USDA loan, county owns the infrastructure, the county's the one paying the debt. So we have a lot of experience with this type of situation. The prior financial statements had this set up as a custodial fund, which is like your cities and your townships and your schools where you just collect the tax and remit the tax, not taking into effect that you actually own the infrastructure and you actually are in charge of the debt. So we needed to reclassify that from a custodial fund to a business type fund because really, you know, it is a sewer, it's a sewer treatment. You're, you're collecting revenues, you're, you know, depreciating those assets. It should be contained in a business type fund. So we went ahead and we reclassified that to a business type fund to properly account for what's happening in that fund. On the next page, we do have another correction with the custodial funds. And again, this goes back to the implementation of GASB 54 several years ago. You have assessors, emergency management, and E911. They're contained in your custodial funds. Where you're going ahead, they have separate boards, they have separate budgets. The county is just facilitating the receipts and you're, you're paying their bills for them. You're, you're writing those checks for them. It's a custodial capacity. So they should have fund balance at the end of the year. The prior auditor had reported that as due to other governments. So there was no fund balance at the end of the year for those three funds and there should have been. So we went ahead and reclassified and added that. So they're properly included with that fund balance going forward because that's not your money. You know, you're just going ahead and you're paying their bills, you're, you know, facilitating their receipt of their, of their grants and their, their tax dollars and they should have a fund balance. And then the last, the last piece of this, what I've been talking about before is just in the fund financial statements. But because the county actually presents three sets of financial statements, this is for the whole government-wide financial reporting. So this kind of aggregates everything we've been talking about. And it also pulls in the capital asset piece because with capital assets, we were not able to recreate or give back to the number that they had for capital assets for last year. He had provided working papers and part of our predecessor auditor, successor auditor relationship is that we're, we're able to see those work papers, we're able to have access to that. But he had not maintained his record of what was included in capital assets for last year outside of the infrastructure, which he did have a spreadsheet that Rich got to recreate his, his piece of it. But as far as what's recorded on Rachel's solutions, we could not back into it. So what we did was we knew what we had at June 30th was correct. We knew what the additions and disposals were. So we backed into that beginning number. But the majority of this adjustment has to do with infrastructure and the useful life that they had put on their infrastructure. Previously before Rich is, you know, now maintaining his infrastructure, previously the predecessor auditor had been doing that. And he'd been going ahead and putting useful lives on infrastructure. And it was not necessarily in accordance with what it should have been. And so in order to get that on track, we had to restate. Yep. Any questions? I know that's a lot of information. That's a lot of big numbers. It's a lot of adjustments. But like I said, you know, we confirmed beginning and ending balances. You know, we're confident that, that the numbers we have going forward are, are correct.
Something you can build on for the next audit.
It will be.
Start it up solid.
Well, and that's what I kept telling Rachel through this process, that this one's going to be brutal. This one's going to be brutal. And you know, fiscal 25 might be too. Just because, you know, we weren't here until January. And so there's some things that, you know, didn't get corrected, didn't get fixed until, you know, a little bit later in the year. But fiscal 26 is going to be a piece of cake.
Slap done.
Yeah. Okay. So any questions or concerns about that? Then we'll, we'll, we'll jump back up to page six then. Page six, the rest of it makes a little bit more sense once you know that we did have to restate and do those. Okay. So the management's discussion and analysis is the county's chance to show off a little bit and tell what the highlights are and to talk about your budget and to talk about economic factors that were considered when you were looking at fiscal 25's budget. So, you know, we talk about what the highlights are, the revenues that had increased, you know, the, what the expenditures had done. We also talk about what's included in this annual report. So the county does actually present three sets of financial statements. You budget on the cash basis. So we have a budget to cash actual comparison that we, that we include. You have your modified accrual financial statements, which mirror the gap report that is submitted to the Department of Management. And then you also have your full accrual financial statements, which includes your capital assets and your long-term liabilities. And that's most like what you would see in the private sector. So those are, you know, what you'd expect in private industry is those full accrual, those full accrual financial statements. And then we also provide reconciliations so that you can see exactly how you get from one to the other. So we start with the modified accrual. We show you step by step how you get to those full accrual financial statements and that's all included in here. So we go ahead and talk about what's included in this report. We talk about the different types of funds that you have in here. We also present some comparative information on page nine and page 10. We have the changes in the net position and we also have the net position of governmental activities. Again, we had to restate, so we do have those numbers as restated. We also talk about the individual major funds on page 11. Talk about what happened with them, you know, during the course of the fiscal year. We talk about some budgetary highlights. Rachel got to write some paragraphs and some information about what all happened in the budget world during this fiscal year to be included. We talk a little bit about your capital asset additions. A little bit about your debt, what was going on with that. And then again, we hit the economic factors and next year's budgets and rates. So we talk about what was going through the budget process as you were looking into 2025. So the actual financial statements then start on page 14. So 14 and 15 are your statement of net position. This is government-wide. So this is like your private sector, full accrual. It's got your, your capital assets, it's got your long-term liabilities. Most similar to what you would see in the private sectors. Yep. So, and again, new this year is your business type activities. That is not presented before. That is your Carpenter Sewer. So that is presented separate from your governmental activities. And then exhibit B is your statement of activities. This is most like your income statement, even though it doesn't look like an income statement you would ever see on the private sector because of the way that it's presented, it's split out. We're showing expenses, we're showing charges for services, we're showing operating grants, we're showing capital grants, we're showing general revenues. Because we had to implement GASB 100 this year, we also were required to show all of the error corrections and list them out on the face of the financial statement so that you can see what the previously reported net position had been. And you can see all of the adjustments then to get to where we were at July 1st. So for this fiscal year, the county did see an overall change in net position of a little over $8 million. A good share of that is due to the Carpenter Market Fund. We had about $3.3 million worth of infrastructure and infrastructure construction in progress that is added to the county's net position through the internal, through the Carpenter Market Fund. So the county also continued to spend American Rescue Plan funds. You know, so and we did some, you know, several capital assets into, into play too. So any questions so far? Okay. Now exhibit C and exhibit E, those are your modified accrual financial statements. So this is a gap report. So this has a 60-day accrual period. We look at receipts, accounts receivable, dispersments, and accounts payable. Again, 60-day accrual period and it's included in here. We present the general fund, rural services, local option, sales tax, secondary roads, and your urban renewal as major funds. There's a calculation that we perform to determine what calculate as a major fund to be presented individually on the face of the financial statements. You also have the choice, if there's something that you feel is important that you want to see on the face of this financial statement, we can also classify something as a discretionary major fund. But for this year, all of these actually calculated as major. Yep. With the non-major funds, those are the rest of your governmental funds. They're aggregated and presented together. They have their chance to shine on schedules one and schedules two because they're all presented individually. If you flip back to schedules one and two, you can see all the funds that come together to present that non-major column.
What page is that? Where's that?
It's in the back. It's on schedules one and two. Yep, yep. We'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there. So then they have their presentation as well. Yep, yep. Okay. So again, this mirrors the gap report. So then if you flip the next to page 22, exhibit D, this is your reconciliation on how you get from the modified accrual basis to the full accrual. So it steps you through what all is added. You know, we're adding your capital assets. We're looking at your deferred inclusive resources. We're looking at your liabilities. And again, this steps you through how you get from one to the other. So then if you go to exhibit E, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for your governmental funds. Again, we've got the same funds presented as major and then the non-majors are aggregated and presented. Again, we have a fund balance as previously reported. We show the error correction to get to where we started on July 1st. Exhibit F then on the following pages, same type of reconciliation. It, it takes the change in fund balance and then it steps you through how to get from the modified accrual back to the full accrual, full accrual financial statements. So, and if anybody has any questions or wants to see that, you know, I have all those journal entries. I provided all that information to Rachel. So she has all the journal entries and she has everything so that you can, you know, actually see the entries and everything that was made to step through that process.
Is that something that you can send out to us, Rachel, that list of journal entries?
Yep. Okay. So then exhibit GH and I are in regards to your Carpenter Sewer. They're also presented as, as a business type one in front of the book, but they're presented as enterprise funds also. So again, you have your assets, liabilities. On exhibit H, we have your statement of changes. Exhibit I is your cash flows for Carpenter Sewer. And then exhibit J and K, these have to do with your custodial funds. So these are the funds where the county's acting as the fiduciary agent. So this is going to be your assessor, your 911, your corporations, your townships, your schools where you're collecting and remitting. And again, the detail for these is presented in the back in schedules three and four. We aggregate it and present it as a statement as exhibit J and K. So exhibit J is going to be your statement of net position. Exhibit K is going to be your changes. You can see the ins and outs for the year. And again, with exhibit K, we did have the error correction to go ahead and reclassify the fund balance for the assessor, the emergency management, and the 911. So that So that brings us to the notes to the financial statements. And the notes to the financial statements just go ahead and provide so much information about how the county's accounting policy works. It's also a very good sleep aid. So having a hard time getting to sleep, especially the pension, the pension footnote is, is particularly sleep-worthy. So the notes to the financial statements just go ahead and they summarize all of your accounting policies and procedures. It talks about what funds are included where, why things are kind of accounted for and presented the way they are. It talks about the definitions of your net position. It talks about your major funds and what's going in and out of those funds. That's on page 34. It, it just gives you all kinds of good information about how governmental financial statements work, how governmental accounting works. It's also a really good vocabulary lesson, starting on page 36. We're required to disclose the definitions of all the terms and, you know, what's included in that so that you can actually see and understand what's included in each of those balance sheet items. So again, several pages of that. That's the summary of state different accounting policies. And that goes through till page 42. Page 42, we have a note about cash, cash equivalents and pooled investments. And again, talks about what the county has for cash and investments. You know, typically here we see a lot of bank accounts and certificates of deposit, which is, you know, pretty common for counties. Page 43, we start with the interfund transfers and disclose the money that was transferred back and forth between the county funds. Note number four, which starts on the bottom of page 43, we go ahead and we show the capital asset activity for the year. And again, this is going to look different this year because we're starting with as previously stated. So we're taking the audit numbers from June 30th of 2023. We're showing you what the adjustments were and what classifications they were in. And we get to the balance at July 30th, or July 1st of 2023. Then we go ahead and we present the increases and decreases to get to what the balance was at June 30th of 2024. So that goes ahead and 43, on to page 44, shows all of those adjustments and classifications. And again, thank you so much to Rich for doing that because I know that was a huge job.
Part of, I needles and paste that.
It is. So, so and we do the same thing then for the business type activities. You know, this is your Carpenter Water and Sewer. So before you did not have anything presented as infrastructure, capital assets in that particular fund. You know, we're going ahead and we're reporting that and, and having that as a business type activity going forward. So again, we're starting at nothing. You know, we're, we're making the adjustments. We're getting to where the balance was at the end of the year. Note number five then on page 45 is our due to other governments. Again, this is a required disclosure to go ahead and detail out what you've collected to remit to other governments. The governmental funds, it's not such a big deal. We have $243 in general and $51 in the secondary roads. But the custodial is where, you know, we're really looking at taxes that have been collected and need to be remitted. So we're disclosing that. Note number six then starts with our long-term liabilities. And again, we have the adjustments to restate documented here. So we're showing the balance as previously stated. We're showing the amounts that were restated to get to that restated beginning balance. With the, the general loan, or the general obligation bonds, he had recorded a payment of $510,000 that actually did not get made until fiscal 24. So again, that was the importance of us confirming the beginning balance of June 30th of 2023 to know that it was still $20,120,000 and not the 1906 that had been presented. Same with, you know, the loan agreements. You know, going ahead and when you are having loan agreements with local banks, you have the benefit of when you make that payment, if you make it early, they take the principal and interest split as of that day. You know, when you're dealing with UMB Financial, they say, here's your amortization schedule. And it doesn't mean, it doesn't matter if you pay it, you know, a day or two early. It doesn't, you know, really matter if you are on time, you know, your payment is your payment. They follow the amortization schedule. But when you're doing the business with the local banks, you know, most of them will go ahead. And if you pay a couple of days early, they're going to adjust your principal and interest on that. So. And then we also had an error with the loan agreements as well. So we do have that corrected. So then you can see the increases and decreases during the year to get to what was actually a liability then at June 30th. On page 46, we do the same thing with that USDA loan agreement. We pulled that out of the governmental funds and now it's presented on its own as a business type. So it's part of that Carpenter Sewer because that USDA loan is in fact associated with that Carpenter Sewer. Then following, we provide the amortization schedules for your bonds. We provide the amortization schedules for the loan agreements. And again, I got this all straight from the banks and from the financial and from the financial institutions that you were dealing with. So I wanted third-party confirmation since there was such a discrepancy between what had been presented last year to what is presented this year. I wanted outside confirmation to make sure that those numbers were accurate. So the amortization schedules came straight from your financing authorities. So then that gets us to Note Seven, which starts on Page 51. And this is the sleep aid. This is the one that is really interesting. It's all actuarial information. The county is required by GASB 68 to present an IFRS pension liability. And so the actuaries go ahead and they prepare all of that. The state auditor's office goes ahead and they audit that. They provide the information to be included in the county's audit report. So they tell us what your liability is. They provide us with all of this lovely information to include in the audit report. So all of this is actuarial information on how they came up with what they believe your net pension liability would be should IFRS not be able to fund those benefits. So we have several pages of that. On Page 55, other post-deployment benefits. That's a close second on the sleep aid. Again, actuarially determined. The county uses Bob Hopson as your actuary to calculate what your other post-deployment benefit liability would be. And he provides the information that gets included in, as a liability on the financial statements and also as the note. So again, this all comes from him. So it explains what rates he used, what factors he used to determine what your other post-deployment benefit liability would be. So I said several pages of that. On Page 57, then we hit the risk management. Mitchell County is a member of the Heartland Insurance Risk School, and so they provide us with this disclosure to talk about your liabilities. Page 58, we talk about the Floyd Mitchell Chickasaw Solid Waste Management. You guys are a member of that, so we just disclosed that. They are fully funded with their financial assurance. So, you know, as of right now, fully funded, won't be a liability for the county. So we disclose that fact. Note 11 is business transactions. This is small-town Iowa, so related-party transactions are prevalent. You want to do business with your, with your local businesses, and there's times where there's a related-party issue there. So this is just disclosing that there were related-party business transactions during this fiscal year. And then we'll address that again once we get to the findings in the back of the report, too. On Page 59, then, we have a note about the Carpenter Sanitary Sewer. Again, just explaining the relationship that the county has. We also talk about tax abatements and the economic impact of those tax abatements during this fiscal year, the amount of property tax that was deferred. On Page 60, we list the city of Osage and the city of St. Ansel, and we talk about how much money was diverted from the county based on their economic development and urban renewal projects. So we go ahead and we disclose that. The next note then is Note 14 on development agreements. And again, this was something that had not been previously reported in the audit reports. So when the county enters into a development agreement, they're required to disclose that in footnote disclosure. So we just go ahead, and we've outlined the development agreements that are currently in place with the county and how much money was paid out based on that agreement during the fiscal year and the cumulative amount that's been paid out for those development agreements. Just a disclosure. And then on Page 61 at the top, we talked about the construction commitment. Anything that's considered construction in progress for our capital assets at the end of the year, we have a disclosure to let you know what projects are going on. So we had the HVAC upgrade, and then we also had some contracts through the Department of Transportation that were in progress at June 30 and had not been completed. So we go ahead and we disclose that as well. Then on Page 62, you'll hit subsequent events. You did issue some debt between the June 30th and the time of the report issuance. So we do disclose that as well. So the users of the financial statements are aware that there was debt issued between the end of the year and the issuance of the audit report. Everybody still with me? Okay. So then on Page 63, we get to the budgetary comparison schedule. And this is the cash basis statement. Because the county budgets on a cash basis, we are required, this is required supplementary information. So we show the cash in and the cash out from the governmental funds. So we start with that, and that's the actual column. The less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage because they are not included on your budget documents. So we don't have to include anything there. So we pull that out to get to the net. And then we also present the original budget along with the final amended budget, and then we show the final-to-net variance. And then that's kind of an analytical that we do. We look for red flags. And, you know, some of those amounts are significant, but county staff and departments were able to explain why there is a significant variance. I mean, projects never go the way you think they're going to. Mother Nature kind of has her own way of interfering with that. Grant funding never seems to arrive when you think it's going to. So you amend your budget based on what you think is going to happen, and you use your best guess with the information that you have at that time. But that's not always how life works. So again, some of those variances do seem like they are significant, but they were able to be explained, so no red flags with any of this. The following pages then are some additional required supplementary information. You know, just additional information on how the budget works, what your nine classes of expenditures are, how many times you amended the budget, and what the total, you know, change in the budget had been. We're also required to present several pages of information about the IFRS liability. So on Pages 66 and 67, we show what the county's proportionate share of the net pension liability is for IFRS, and we're required to present 10 years of that information. On Pages 68 and 69, same thing. We're required to present 10 years of the county's contributions and what the county's covered payroll was for those years. And then following that, more notes to required supplementary information. Again, some more actuarial information. On 71 and 72, same thing. We've got seven years of other post-deployment benefit required supplementary information. This will eventually be a 10-year schedule, but this GASB was only implemented seven years ago. So this schedule will be growing to a 10-year schedule as the information comes available. And then on 73, we have the notes to the required supplementary information. Then again, more actuarial information that's presented. So then that gets us to Pages 74 and 75. This is Schedule One with the non-major governmental funds. So all of the funds are aggregated and presented as non-major in the front of the book. This is their chance to shine so you can see what the individual activity was in those funds. So Schedule One is your balance sheet. Schedule Two is your statement of changes. And then Schedule Three and Schedule Four, same thing for your custodial funds so that you can see what the individual activity was in each of those funds. And then Schedule Five, this is 10 years of the schedule of the revenues by source and expenditures by function. This is prescribed by the state auditor's office, and you will note on the local option sales left, sales tax line, it says not reported separately for 2023 all the way back to 2015. So that information had not been presented in the prescribed format in prior years. So it will be going forward. You know, 2024, we have that information, but because he did not present that separately, we can't mess with his numbers. So.
So those numbers are buried within the other county.
They're buried in property and other county tax. Yep, yep. And it was several years ago. It was probably 2014, 2013, where the state auditor's office changed the prescribed format where they wanted to see that local option sales tax separately. Yeah, because it's a different animal. I mean, it's not property tax. You want to have that, it's a separate classification. So it's important to have that separate. So, so yeah, going forward, we will be definitely having that in the prescribed format. So that's the end of the financial statements. Any questions or concerns or?
So now you had talked about the Carpenter Sewer system. So all of those pumps and so forth are now on an actual depreciation schedule.
It depends if they meet the threshold or not because the county has a capital asset policy in place as of not too long ago. Because that was something else that we found during the course.
It had a minimum value, right?
It has to have a threshold, anything over threshold. I think, did you go five or 10? Okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, so anything over that threshold is reported as a capital asset. It will be depreciated. Yeah, but it has to meet the threshold.
The threshold. We just have to know what it is at some point.
Yeah, and I believe it was passed because that was something we found during the test work for the capital assets where, you know, normally counties have a policy in place that determines what your threshold is. What does an asset have to cost you in order for you to include it? Because to put desks and chairs and, you know, it doesn't make any sense. So back in 2002, when GASB 34 was initially implemented, the threshold had been $5,000 for equipment, vehicles, you know, that type of thing. Well, it's 20-some years gone by now. So, I mean, there's definitely been a change in values, too. So it was something that would have been needed to have been looked at anyway, and several of our counties are currently revamping their thresholds. Yeah, because to chase $5,000, you know, if you depreciate that over 10 years, who cares? You know, it's not material dollar amount. So, so yeah, like I said, that was something that we found during test work, and now you guys have a policy, so.
I do have a question on that. I don't know if I can ask it the correct way or not, so bear with me if it doesn't come out right. So the, a lot of the error corrections that you have done in here, how does that reflect to the line item numbers that are on our budgets as far as what we approve for the budget, what we do for budget amendments? When you have all those large-dollar error corrections, does that affect any of those particular numbers in those fine items?
No. The good thing about this is most of these error corrections are balance sheet items, which does not impact your cash basis bail, or cash basis budget. Because you're looking at your revenues and your expenditures, and, you know, the things that we're correcting are the beginning balances for debt, the beginning balances of capital assets. You know, we're moving the classifications of funds from a special revenue fund to, and, you know, that will impact the budget because when Rachel does the budget now, if you're going to spend any money out of conservation land acquisition fund, instead of being budgeted out of special revenue other, it's going to be budgeted out of general other. So it's just a matter of flipping the switch and solutions to have it pull into the correct column, to be formatted correctly for your budget.
I just wanted to make sure what we have approved is, remember, they didn't change.
Nope, shouldn't impact, shouldn't impact.
Thank you.
So, so along the lines of that question, so if in fact we had loan balances that were incorrect, then our budget that was using those loan balances and repayment amounts, or are the repayment amounts, amortization schedule amounts correct? It was just that our ending balance, loan balance was off?
Yeah. And Rachel is using the amortization schedules as she should be, so everything is okay with that. It's just that, it's almost like he just threw in, because if you look back at the audit report from last year, which, you know, we use as our starting point, too, he only showed that you had $510,000 worth of debt payments when you look at the notes that we just went through. And, I mean, it was over $2 million worth of. So I don't know if they just missed it, or, I'm not sure what the disconnect was, but she uses the amortization schedules when preparing the budget document. So everything, yeah, it should be good.
Very good, as far as, thank you.
Okay. All right, then on Page 84, we have some more Gardner &amp; Company letterhead. And this is the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters. In addition to opining on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we also do some internal control work, and we also do some Code of Iowa compliance test work. So this letter just goes ahead and outlines the work that we have done. Again, this is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that would have had an impact on this, which that's good and bad because if there's something you do, you know, 50 times a year, like publish your minutes, you do it wrong once, and if that's the one that we pick, you end up with the funding. So again, based on tests and samples and report, we report based on the audit test work that we have done. This also talks about the difference between a deficiency in internal control being a material weakness or being a significant deficiency. So the material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control. There's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement could happen. So we do have a couple that are considered material weaknesses. We also have things that are lesser in scope, and those are considered significant deficiencies, and we do have one of those as well. So again, this letter just goes ahead and kind of sets the stage to start talking about findings. And the schedule of findings then starts on Page 86. The first finding is segregation of duties, and this is in every single audit report that I issue for every single municipality that we audit. And it's because you don't have enough people on staff to entirely segregate the duties between the custody and the record-keeping of the cash. So it's possible for one person to handle a whole transaction from inception to completion. Now, you do implement internal controls to try to mitigate those risks, and, you know, there are some really good controls in place. Supervisors are involved in the claims process. That is the most important thing. As a supervisor's need to be involved in the claims process. You need to be looking at the claims. Don't just look at a list. Look at the claims. There's been such an uptick in misappropriation in the last couple of years. The economy is hard, times are tough, people get creative. Look at the claims, especially if you have credit card reimbursements, if you have mileage reimbursements, if you are, you know, paying for meals when they're at meetings. Take a look. Make sure that the mileage is appropriate. Make sure that the meals are appropriate. Look at those credit card statements. Make sure that, you know, there's supporting documentation for all of that. So even if you just do that, you know, that's kind of bare minimum. But, you know, if you have questions asked, see something, say something. So like I said, that's the number-one defense that the county has against, you know, spending money in a not public-purpose way. The other one is to be involved in the bank reconciliation process, and we're going to get to that because I have a finding about that as well. But again, segregation of duties, cross-train employees. If somebody's going to be gone, you know, make sure that somebody else can step in and do those duties when they're not there. So that's very important. The second finding that we have is in regards to financial reporting. It starts on the bottom of 86 and then flips over, and the meat of it is then on Page 87. During the course of the audit, we found material amounts of certificate or deposit interest, debt-related interest expenditures, accounts receivable, notes receivable, deferred inflows of resources, capital assets, and construction-in-progress additions that hadn't been properly recorded on the county's financial statements. Part of this is due to the restatement of the financial statements. Part of it is due to activity that happened during 2024. So adjustments were proposed and made by the county to properly include these transactions. With the debt-related interest expenditures, what had been happening is the chart of accounts allows you to budget for principal and interest separately, and it should be because for the budget and for the cash in the gap, it specifically has those broken out between principal and interest. So since you're going ahead and you're required to report principal and interest, that's how it needs to be paid. So it's just a matter of when you're paying those claims, to make those payments, to make sure that it's going to principal and interest and not just one line item because they're two separate things. So that, I believe, is resolved going forward. Accounts receivable. It's really important for the departments to let the treasurer's office know if something received in July, and August especially, is for services or goods provided in June. The treasurer's office staff is not present in every single department, so they don't have that firsthand knowledge. So they're relying on the departments to let them know for the receipts in July and August if it should be in account receivable or not so that they can record it as such. We also had the opioid settlement. That was something that's been big the last couple of years. The opioid settlement is going to be received over 17 years. And the state auditor's office provided spreadsheets and information on their website to help facilitate the tracking of that. So we have established a spreadsheet that includes all of those opioid settlements, and then it incorporates all the information on the state auditor's office to be able to help the counties track those dollars. And so we've provided those spreadsheets to Rachel so she can go ahead and track that opioid settlement as it comes in now. So then going forward, all she'll have to do is update that spreadsheet and we'll be able to properly include everything on the financial statements. And that one is also tied into that deferred inflows of resources because again, it's going to be received over 16 or 17 years. So it's going to be not recognized as revenue until you actually receive it. The notes receivable is in regards to that $300,000 loan that is out there. And then with the capital assets and construction in progress, again, that's with the infrastructure that was adjusted, the construction in progress, the HVAC project, you know, at the sheriff's office needs to be included in construction in progress. But again, all of these transactions, you know, are now properly reported. The adjusting journal entries were made to include them. The next finding we have then is in regards to preparation of full-disclosure financial statements. Again, this is in 98% of the audit reports that we issue. You know, and Mitchell County doesn't have a CPA on staff that prepares the GAAP report and prepares the full accrual financial statements along with all of this footnote disclosure. So because we assist with that preparation, we're required to put this finding into the audit report because we assist with it. audit report because we assist with it. Now, in order to maintain our independence, because that's very important that we do maintain our independence, there is a process for that that we follow very strictly. And any adjusting journal entry that's proposed, it has to be approved by the county. It's always the county's decision whether or not to make that entry. At the end, you know, I provide all of the documentation to Rachel. You know, I came in and we went through all of the entries, everything, so that she understood what was, what was going on. And then ultimately, uh, the county approves the financial statements before we issue. So they take complete responsibility for that. So that way we go ahead and we're able to maintain our independence and still opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. Okay, so then the next finding we have then on page 88 is in regards to the general ledger and bank reconciliation. And the bank reconciliation process is happening every month in the treasurer's office, but it's not a complete process. The treasurer's office has their, their reports and the auditor's office has their reports. The auditor's office considers things to be an expenditure when the check is issued. That's when it becomes an expenditure. On the treasurer's side, they balance cash. So it doesn't affect cash until that transaction is redeemed. So, you know, cash is received, cash, you know, is, is sitting there until that outstanding check is, is cashed. So those have to talk, those have to agree. So what was happening is on the treasurer's side, they were going ahead and doing their reconciliations, but they weren't verifying with the auditor's office if they match. And so that triggered a finding because we actually had two general ledger funds that were not pulling on either side. They weren't set up the same, so they weren't talking. So we had a fund on the treasurer's side that wasn't on the auditor's fund status at all. And then we had a sub-fund on the treasurer's side that just wasn't pulling into the fund status. So through the reconciliation process that our audit staff did, we were able to identify that those two funds did have issues. But that should be part of your monthly reconciliation going forward, is making sure that the auditor's side and the treasurer's side are matching and agreeing. Yep, yep.
Is that a solutions thing, or is that something that both of them just need to talk?
Yeah. They just need to agree. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it's just one more step. You know, the treasurer's side is balancing their banks with their treasurer's general ledger, but the fund status is the general ledger for the county, because you're reporting when a check is issued, that's when it's an expenditure, that's when it hits your budget, that's when you're going to report it in your financial statements. And that's different from the treasurer's side where they don't record it until the check is redeemed. So they just have to make sure that the two sides are talking and that, yep. And then it was also noticed that the treasurer was forced balancing amounts in solutions. And that just opens the door to things you don't want to open the door to. So just making sure that all of the items that are outstanding, you know, have, have a purpose, they, that they have documentation. Um, you know, and my suggestion was, you know, solutions is having issues at this point. Everybody kind of knows that they're struggling. My suggestion is go old fashioned, do it by hand. Honestly, honestly, I, I still have two counties that do not use the solutions balancing system. They do it by hand, and they are right on the money. And I get their reports on July 1st at 8:02 every year, because they do it by hand, they know they're on their, on the money. So if solutions is struggling and that is being a struggle, that is my suggestion, is to do the old fashioned way. Have your list of outstanding checks, have your list of deposits in transit, you know, just do it old school, because you just.
So they're just doing it on a spreadsheet? If I can ask, is that what they're?
Right now, it's in the solutions software, because solutions does provide a cash and, and balancing module, so that you can go ahead and reconcile your, your checkbook.
Right.
You know, yeah, within their system. And it's great when it works, but when it doesn't, it causes problems. And Shannon's been struggling.
In solutions' defense, it was not a solutions problem, it was a staff training problem. And so that staff now is not completing reconciliations without me and my other deputy presence, because it was a plus or minus number or not including a number, so we've got more in force that Elizabeth advises to do. And the three of us are doing it together until we feel comfortable that everyone's on the same. It was a training and one person was doing it and until they, until I started looking at stuff, we didn't realize they weren't reconciling until I went through the other reports.
Okay. Well, good. It sounds like that's going to be fixed.
It's already.
Yeah. And you know, the, the main thing is, is when we come in to do the audit, you know, I want to see, how did you reconcile? You know, it's not my job to reconcile, it's my job to audit how you reconcile. And so I want to see that list of outstanding checks at June 30th. I want to see that list of deposits in transit. You know, I want to see the reconciliation. We've got our work papers set up so that it's very report-driven, so that we have your cash on hand at, at the year. We have your, your bank reconciliations and then any investments that you have, you know, and here, your CD heavy. So I want to see what all makes up those numbers. I want the documentation. I want to know what checks were outstanding. I want to know what receipts were deposits in transit. I want to see it all. So I want you.
We self-reported that issue.
Yeah, yeah. She did. She did. No. Nope. But again, you know, with the force balancing in solutions, that does not make me comfortable. So, um, you know, I want every reconciling item to have documentation, and it sounds like you're going to get to that.
We can.
Yep. Okay, so then the next finding we have is on page 89, and it's in regards to deposit procedures. And, um, you know, we talked about internal control and timely reporting, and it was noted, uh, conservation and emergency management, but then Shannon brought it to my attention, it was 911 also, but it's my understanding that that's the same person, EMA 911. So this covers it all. But those departments are not timely remitting deposits to the treasurer's office for recording in the financial statements. And, you know, through our audit process, my staff actually, um, found that the state was calling to check and see why checks hadn't been cashed. So, um, it's very important, stuff gets lost. Not everything is the, you know, ACH or EFT. The state still does send paper checks. So it's really important as soon as you have it. And everybody's right here, you know? That department is just right in the next building. Conservation's not that far out, you know, people can drive in every day and deposit that timely. There's really no reason why those items are sitting around in a desk.
They have responded those, so hopefully.
Hopefully, okay.
Okay, so that, that's my question, Dave. Somebody has notified them of the?
Oh, yes.
I think both departments are happy of this page.
Okay.
Got it to let them know, and they are responding.
Well, and, um, my staff, when they were doing the test work for those respective departments, had conversations with the ones involved. So I don't like findings to be a surprise. So yeah, they're, when we're here for the fieldwork, they know something's up. You know, they, they know that there's an issue.
It has been formally addressed throughout the last 18 months.
Right.
Okay.
So along with that, and, and with our, um, your previous suggestion for making sure that we have backup plans in place and cross-training up for employees, so if checks or funds come in, then someone else can make sure that they get to the right spot?
Exactly.
Is also included in that?
Yeah. And you know, there's, there's resources on the state website. There's a, a website called, you know, the Iowa Checkbook, and that has all of the payments from any of the state organizations to the county. So you can go in and it's an Excel spreadsheet that is updated regularly, usually about monthly, I believe. But that shows the payments that are, that are coming from all of the different state agencies to the county. So, and that's what we base, that's our state confirmation. So when we're coming in to do the audit, we go out to that state of Iowa checkbook and pull all of the receipts that Mitchell County should have received for the fiscal year. Now again, tests and samples, we don't look at every single one that comes through, but you know, the larger ones, and especially the grant dollars too, you know, we're looking to make sure that those are, are received timely. It also has the dates that they are issued and the GACS. The GACS is the identifying number from the state, so you can go ahead and identify those payments, so you know when they're, when they're coming in, so. Okay, so that gets us into the statutory reporting. Um, and again, this is Code of Iowa compliance test work. The state auditor's office provides us with a Code of Iowa compliance guide every year. Uh, there are some things that they want us to look at every year. There are some things that they do every other year, every three years, every five years, and sometimes they throw in new stuff for fun. So, um, again, based on tests and samples, we don't look at every single transaction that might have impacted the findings and then report based on our test work. So the first one is for the budget. And dispersment during the year ended June 30, 2024 didn't exceed the amounts budgeted and dispersment did not exceed the amounts appropriated. However, the amount appropriated by department didn't exceed the dispersment approved in the certified budget and subsequent amendments. This is really easy to do, because you're so familiar with that budget, you know what those numbers should be. And then you see that, even though maybe that's not the number that's printed there. And so, um, a second set of eyes is just great, or using a spreadsheet to go ahead and make sure that the amounts that are being appropriated by department tie back to what's been approved in the budget amendment. So again, you get so familiar with those budget documents, um, you know, I have it with the financial statements where I know what that number's supposed to be, so that's what I see, whether or not that's printed in the, in book or not. So just a double check, uh, second set of eyes is always a good idea with all those budget, budget numbers. On page 90 then, we go to questionable expenditures. And for this one, for this year, we say no expenditures were identified, which we may believe may not meet the requirements of public purpose. That's not to say that there weren't any. That's to say that during our audit test work, we did not come across any that we didn't feel had appropriate public purpose for dispersments. So, um, yeah, and that's something we look at every year. For the business transactions, the Code of Iowa recognizes $6,000 as the threshold for potential conflict of interest if you're doing business with a related party. But there are ways to go ahead and do business with those related parties as long as you follow a certain rule. So this year, we have two listed. One of them is over the $6,000 threshold, but the county employee did not participate in the acquisition of services. And that's one of the ways to go ahead and be using those related parties without having a finding associated with it. So, um, another way is to go through competitive bidding process, uh, where, you know, multiple businesses are able to go ahead and, and bid on going ahead for the, for the service. So, so because the proper procedures were followed, this becomes just a transparency disclosure that you did have related party fund, uh, transactions. There's no finding associated with it, it's just a disclosure.
So if I can ask, so the concern is that there was not a competitive bid in that situation?
Yeah, possibly.
And the one that's over $6,000.
Yeah. But he didn't, the county employee didn't participate in the acquisition of those services. It was done, you know, without him. He didn't initiate it.
Or to the director.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so then if we flip over to page 91, uh, we did find that the county was not putting the full text of the resolutions onto the county's internet site. And so I know that you're working on revamping and possibly, you know, making some changes with that. So as you were going through that process, just make sure that the full text for the resolutions are being put on the website. Um, you know, everything's kind of moving that direction, more electronic, so, um, it's important to have that information available.
So you mean the full resolution, the whole?
The whole text. Yep, yep, yep. And it can be scanned in, it can be, you know, whatever. It just needs to be available, so.
And then it's identified as that resolution on the website, correct?
Yes.
I've seen that a lot.
Yeah. And that's something that's just happened here in the last year or so. It's actually something that was new for our audit compliance program this year. That was a new step that they were having us look to verify. So, I mean, it's something that's happened pretty recently, that they're requiring that to be included on your website, so. The next finding that we have then is in regards to the investment policy. And the investment policy is required to have specific verbiage that require, that actually refers to chapters 12B and 12C. So it's just a matter of updating the verbiage in your investment policy. It's something that the treasurer will do and present to the board supervisors, it'll be approved by the board, and then you'll be good going forward. So it's just a verbiage change.
The last one, it was written originally in 1992.
Yeah.
And it's addressed a Senate file.
Yeah.
That was before the ruling happened. So I'm in the process of it. We have, um, it's just changing verbiage, but I go, I'm redoing it.
Yeah, you might as well. Yep, yep. So it sounds like that one will be resolved hopefully for next year as well. Um, we have a finding that starts at the bottom about the tax increment financing. Uh, and the Department of Management has provided specific forms that they want used, just to clarify, because TIP is a complicated, complicated, complex process. And so the Department of Management has developed their certifying, decertifying, you know, reducing the amount that you were asking for every year. They've developed a specific form, a specific process that they want used when you're going ahead and making those decisions. So it's just important that as you're approving that certification or decertification or requesting an amount different than the max, make sure you use those Department of Management approved forms so that you're in compliance, so.
That's where you find those.
Um, Rachel has them.
Yep. They're right on the Department.
Department of Management website.
Yep.
Yep. And again, TIP is a very complicated thing, and so Department of Management's doing everything they can to make it as clear and concise as they can, so that there's a clear trail of every obligation that has been certified to be approved, to be paid for TIP dollars. Um, and it's just, you know, it, it's just a good tool to have, so that everything is in order. Um, if you're paying off debt early and need to decertify interest payments, you know, that way you can go ahead and use that form and everything is properly documented, everything goes through the board, everything's approved. It's just, it just makes it a lot clearer, so.
So then does that decertification need to be in the form of a resolution?
It can be, it can be. And again, 99 counties, 99 different ways of doing things. But, you know, the, the consistent thing is the form. You know, some counties will just go ahead and have those forms approved by the supervisors, which is totally, totally okay. Some will go ahead and do by resolution. That's good too, but you still have to use the form, because that's what Department of Management has said that they want you to use. So you just need to make sure you're using their, their materials.
So as long as you're using the forms, then you wouldn't have to do a resolution also?
Wouldn't have to.
We would just?
Wouldn't have to. I like resolutions just because they're more formal. I guess that's my preference. If I, if I was the auditor, that's how I would do it. I would have the forms, but then I would have those approved by resolution.
Okay.
And it would detail everything out.
So then you just show the form and give it a resolution number? Is that how you?
You can.
Handle that? That would be?
You can.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, 99 counties, 99 different ways of doing it. I just.
Looking for the most efficient.
Yeah, and like I said, TIP is so complicated and complex. It's just a way to keep everything organized and straight, so that way if there ever is a question, you know, with the reconciliations that Rachel was required to do, those forms feed into that reconciliation. So if there ever is a question of, oh, you know, did we certify all that debt, or did we certify the interest that we're supposed to have, or especially if you get into rebates and that type of thing, where you're certifying those annually, you know, with, with the debt and the obligations, you can certify the total principal and interest payments right away, because you know what they're going to be. With rebates, that kind of fluctuates from year to year. So those are certified annually. So then by using those forms and using the certification, you can always go back and you've got a clear documentation of what was certified, when it was certified, when it was approved. It's just a real clear trail that way. Okay, so then the next one we have is in regards to transfers. Uh, the Code of Iowa requires the board supervisors to approve operating transfers by resolution. So, um, that was just a, a learning moment, so that will be done by resolution in the pa, in the future. They had just been acknowledged in the board minutes prior to the audit. So they've just been a, a sentence that, you know, those transfers were going to happen, but the code actually does require them to be approved by resolution. It's a little bit more formal. The next one we have is in regards to donations. So during the year, the county donated $1,000 to the Mitchell County Booster Club. There's been a lot of discussion about this in the past few years. Auditor Sand, when our state auditor took office, he had, um, his his pet projects were all about public purpose and, um, you know, whether there's a public benefit to things. And so he had us start looking at contributions and donations to not-for-profit organizations. And as this states, the Constitution of Iowa and several attorney generals' opinions have consistently concluded that a governmental body may not donate public funds to a private not-for-profit entity. So he has gone ahead and included this in our test work, things we're supposed to be specifically looking for. This applies to like food banks and homeless shelters, that type of thing. If there is an agreement in place, which I know you have several agreements in place to go ahead and provide funds to not-for-profits because they're going to provide services for you. So, you know, you look at the food bank as an example. For Mitchell County to actually establish your own county-run food bank, you'd have to have a place to do it, people to run it, inventory, you know, you'd have utilities, you've had all that. So not very cost-effective. Whereas you can go ahead and provide funding to the Mitchell County Food Bank that we do have in existence, and, you know, they're providing a service. So as long as you have an agreement or a 2080 or a contract of some sort in place, which is what you guys have been doing, you can go ahead and provide that funding because they're providing a service for you. You just can't call it a contribution or donation because that's not allowed by the Constitution and by these attorney general opinions. Does that make sense?
So so when you say our agreement, so our resolution, when we're voting on it, is our agreement?
No, it's actually an agreement.
It's a separate, it's a separate agreement?
Yep, it has to be a separate-
So do we have to go back and look and see, you know, like even this year, so that your audit?
Yeah, and here's the thing too. You know, some some of my counties have chosen to do this on an annual basis because they want to revisit, you know, they've got several organizations that need their funding and they request their funding. And so they have it, uh, set up so during the budget process, when those organizations are coming in to request funding, that's when they revisit those, and that's when they put those agreements in place to go ahead and provide that funding. I have some counties that don't want to do that. They know they're going to support those organizations, so they have an agreement in perpetuity where they can just go ahead and, you know, make those decisions, make those, you know, those payments. Again, it's got to be for services or for goods, or, you know, you it can't just be a donation or contribution, you can't call it that. But it has to be a contract or an agreement to provide services.
So I do have some questions about that, so the the I have a service agreement from the city of Olsie, that, and I know you do audits for the city of Olsie, so I think that this has been approved for what the way they're doing it. But it reads pretty much similar to the way our resolutions read. Um, I haven't read it word for word, but so to back up then, the way we've been doing it by resolution is not appropriate.
It depends on the verbiage.
Okay, so we can do it by resolution, but we're going to have to structure the verbiage in the resolution.
Because it can't be called a donation or contribution, it's an agreement to provide services.
Okay, so that's the key words basically right there.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Um, and then you talked about some counties just do a, I'll say differently, needed a blanket policy where they're just going to do this in perpetuity, but-
It's an agreement to provide services in perpetuity, yes.
So the dollar amounts, let's just pick a dollar amount, a thousand dollars. I mean, personally, I don't know if I'm going to be comfortable with just saying, okay, we're going to do a thousand dollars forever. Does a dollar amount in those counties, is it specified as a dollar amount for a definite amount of time, or can those counties change that amount by changing the agreement, or?
Yep, it's another one of those ninety-nine counties, ninety-nine different ways to do things. And it all comes down to what are you comfortable as supervisors? You know, what are you comfortable with? Are you comfortable with saying, you know, we're going to do this for the next ten years, the next five years? Or do you want them to come back and ask you every year? So ultimately, that's what it comes down to, is what you're comfortable with. What I'm looking for is if I see that you're making a payment to a not-for-profit, I want to see that there's a service agreement in place, whether it's done by resolution, whether it's done by an agreement, whether it's done by a 2080. You've got some options on how you want to do that. But that's what I'm looking for, is that documentation where there's a service agreement, and it's not just a blanket donation. And, you know, the reason behind this, um, you know, we've had several, several classes on this, is when you make a contribution to a not-for-profit, you're losing control of what they're really using that money for. So you might have good intentions of what you think that dollar's going for, that's not always what is going to be used for because you've lost the control once the check is cashed. So that is the whole, you know, the purpose and the reason behind this is making sure that there's appropriate public purpose for all those county expenditures.
So is it more clear to structure them like Jim had suggested, where the service, the agreement is part of the resolution and we vote on it and that individual amount, and that's recorded in our resolutions? And then every year, then we know when when either that resolution may be up, or that that they should know that they have to come back, and they should actually be presenting an invoice or some sort of a presentation for funds?
Perfectly fine with that, perfectly fine with that. And I like feedback because if I, you know, if I am you sitting in your chair and I'm giving an organization funding, I want to know what they spend it on.
Yeah, right.
You know, I I want to know. But again, you lose control once that donation is made, so by having this contract for services, I mean, it's specifically outlined that, you know, you're providing this dollars for this purpose. So that way you're documenting a public purpose.
Let me change the verbiage, that's pretty much the red flag right there.
And I'll give a little more. So we did give all of our resolutions that we did to Dayton, and I'm looking at this specific one was done by Conservation Board.
Oh, because I didn't recognize that, I didn't know where that came from.
And I did talk to Mike about it, and so they're going to implement stuff too.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So just to simplify, when we, if we, you had mentioned that we are already doing that, if we change the verbiage, we can continue to just do it like?
We just have to make sure the verbiage does not read that it's a contribution or a donation, because that is prohibited by the Constitution of Iowa and by these attorney generals' opinions. You know, if you're going to go ahead and provide funding to these organizations, they have to be providing a service for you.
Sure.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so any donations of any amount, correct? You know, if we're-
There's not a materiality amount or, you know, a significant dollar amount presented in the guidance that we've received from the state auditor's office. The state auditor's office has us looking at any contributions and donations, period.
So we would have to go back and redo Stacyville. Well, you have, right, we would need to rewrite the verbiage for Stacyville, or actually any of them that you've done within the last twelve months for the next audit, we need to check. Or any donations, for example, the one that we visited about earlier this morning, would that also be considered?
Depends on how they're worded, yeah.
Right, you know, so if we're, you know?
Otherwise she'll be talking to us next year.
Right, exactly. So-
She'll tell us, you guys did not listen to me.
Well, you guys get grace, you know, for next year because again, you know, we're quite a way through fiscal twenty-five, so, yeah.
But it would be foolish to go back and make sure that we get updated, at least the verbiage of those that we've already done, so that we're compliant for next year, and that we have a process in place moving forward.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay. So then the last statutory reporting finding we have is in regards to opioid settlement funds. And, um, they're supposed to be interest earned on those opioid settlement funds, and it needs to be credited to that fund that is required by the settlement. Um, the settlement documents require that. Um, and then also, the chart of accounts was updated to include a specific line item that is supposed to be used when any, you're going to spend those dollars. So you just need to go ahead and make the correction and make sure interest is being earned on those funds. It's being recorded to that general ledger fund, and that you're using that specific line item when you were going ahead and spending those dollars.
So so I want to clarify, similar to any principal or interest on any other, we need a separate line item for the interest, correct?
Yeah, for the interest coming in, yeah, because it is-
And then, yeah.
Yep, it just needs to come into that specific general ledger fund, and it needs to all be contained there because-
And the interest that we're earning.
That is a requirement from the settlement, is that those funds are to be earning interest. So they need to make sure that that's credited to the general ledger. And Shannon's probably already got this. She does.
I'm working on it this year. My question is retroactively, I looked at something, I'm prorating it, interest of the, in money in the county accounts, prorated by the fund balance, go back to every month. You don't want me to say like it was a dollar ninety-nine for three months, so we can assume and go for twelve months.
It's a materiality thing, and it's, that's your call. Because it's, it's-
As long as you can- I look at it like under two dollars a month, so if we go back and say that we've had this fund for thirty-six months, we can give them seventy-two dollars interest, or I can spend a couple at the air to you, you know, maybe.
As long as you can justify it, provide documentation, like I said, in the big scheme of things, it's not material at this point, so it's not going to trigger anything, but because the settlement requires it, that's why we have to do it.
Yeah, and year forward, I'll do, I do that for the sheriff's state, ask for it, but I just figure out.
And we are to do a resolution.
It's just-
Maybe it's on yours, yes.
Yes, this year. Yeah, yeah, this year she can journal entry it, um, any transfer works too, transfer, operating transfer, it's a corrective transfer, so that would be a good way to do it too. Yep, yep. Okay, so that concludes the audit report version of it. We did have other smaller items that are less significant that are included in this audit communication letter that I'm going to leave with Rachel. Um, you know, if we find something that, you know, just needs to be brought to the respective elected official or department head, uh, we did have several things. A lot of it was policies. Um, you did not have a capitalization policy, you didn't have an intangible policy, you didn't have a Gatsby ninety-six policy, which I believe all of that has been taken care of. So now going forward, you're going to have those policies in place. Um, you know, just making sure that dispersments are coded properly. With the board minute claim publications, um, you've been doing it every month for your publishing the claims. The recent interpretation of the code that we have is anytime claims are approved, that's when they're supposed to be published. So that way, if the minutes say we've approved claims, that that list is provided with that set of of board minutes. Another small thing, the mental health fund still has a cash balance of about a penny that just needs to go away. Um, that needs to be corrective transfer to eliminate that because that fund should not be showing up on the fund status at all anymore. Um, so again, little dollar amount, but just a little technicality there. And then with the assessor, uh, the assessor's claims, um, that they're being submitted to the, um, the assessor's office, the assessor's maintaining all that documentation. And so because they decided to maintain that documentation, we expect that documentation to be held at the same standard as what it is held in the auditor's office. And so during test work, we noted that a lot of the claims were not canceled to prevent reuse. And I've seen that before where a claim will go through twice, get paid twice, and it ends up in, you know, misappropriation type of situation. So you want to make sure that all the audit, all the documentation is canceled when you're going through that that claims process. So, and again, it's perfectly fine if they want to maintain their own claims, it's just they have to maintain them at the same standard as what we've got. Conference board minutes for the assessor's office too. Uh, the minutes are very big. It's a that they approve the levy, they approve the salaries, they approve the budget, but the documentation of what is the salary, what is the levy, what is the budget is not included in those minutes. So, um, I did visit with Amy about that, and she has all that documentation, it's just not included as part of her official minutes. And so I encouraged her to go ahead and make that a part of her official minutes, because if you're approving salaries and whatever, and you don't, aren't specific, I mean, it's a little ambiguous. So she's going to include that documentation going forward. So we did have several of that. And then the last thing I have is because Mitchell County spent over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal dollars, that would normally trigger you to have a single audit. Because single audit requirements are if a county spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal money during a fiscal year, you have to go through all that fun, and it's not a lot of fun. The exception is, the Office of Management and Budget has recognized that a lot of these smaller entities are, were required to have single audits because of the spending of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And so they made a special exception that if you're over that seven hundred fifty thousand dollar threshold, and it's because of the spending of your American Rescue Plan Act dollars, you qualify to have what's called an alternative compliance examination engagement. And so that's where we come in, and we determine that that's the reason why you're over that seven hundred fifty thousand dollar threshold is because of this American Rescue Plan Act. And then we can go ahead and we can do limited procedures on just those American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So we're testing for compliance, we're testing to make sure that those expenditures were approved. It's a separate engagement, and then we issue a separate independent accountants report based on the results of our test work. And that, we do look at most all of the expenditures to make sure everything was properly approved, that it had gone through the claims process, that the projects were approved, that, um, you know, you were meeting all the compliance requirements, and that compliance guide is about twenty-seven pages of things that you have to comply with in order to be in compliance with the grant as a whole. So that did trigger a separate engagement. I do have a separate independent accountants report. Rachel will need to file a copy of this with U.S. Department of Treasury. Uh, normally, these are also filed with the Federal Audit Clearing House, but they did a revamp back in October of twenty twenty-three of the Federal Audit Clearing House, and they are currently not accepting these submissions. So we'll just have to keep an eye on it, and, you know, when they decide they're going to accept them, you'll get to file it there as well. But it's been almost two years, and they're still not ready to do that. So at this point, we'll just have to file this with U.S. Department of Treasury. Now with this procedure, we did identify that the county did not have the appropriate procurement policy in place, uh, which again, has already been addressed. The procurement policy goes ahead and it talks about how you're going to acquire these things, um, based on, it it's an acquisition policy that's required by the uniform guidance, which that is what governs the expenditures of those federal dollars. And so it's very specific verbiage on how you're going to procure things, and it's required for a number of different federal grants. So going forward, you're going to be okay because you do have this procurement policy in place, and it is in compliance with the uniform guidance. So going forward, this finding would go away. And that's for federal dollars?
That's for federal dollars.
Procurement policies, yes.
Is that federal dollars directly given to the county? Because I have federal grant projects, but it goes for the D O T.
It goes for the D O T. This is just for the counties. Yep.
Your state.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, don't hit me again.
He was having that whole, like, yeah, life phase.
Yep. Okay, so questions, concerns? I know it's a lot, but you know, I'm kind of an accounting nerd, and I kind of love this stuff, so, yeah.
I'm sorry to go back to donations, but now is the time to talk about it because it needs to be cleared up. So as Rachel said, the the donation for the thousand dollars was from a another department. And there, we had that today also, so there are other departments that are doing donations. When the board supervisors do a donation, shouldn't say a donation, that's wrong, or I'm just used to that, but when we do, when we do something for the public purpose to a certain organization, we have a line item in the ninety-nines that has a dollar amount in it that's, that we use for that purpose. So whether the board decides that we're going to continue to do it by resolution and just change the verbiage in the resolution, if we do that, then it's documented and it's known, and it can be tracked to a line item in the budget for where it came from. Real, real, real clear path. Now, I'm not objecting to other departments doing this, so I don't mean to make it sound like that, but I'm just wondering what line item they're taking. We approve the money for those departments for their budgets, uh, and this goes back to the real, real clear path. I'm wondering what line item they're taking out of their budget for their contribute, whatever the word is going to be.
Okay.
What line item they're going to use for that money, and they also need to know that, I don't know if they do resolutions, I mean, they're going to have to have some sort of document made aware to them that has the right verbiage if they're going to do this.
Yeah, and I think it's just a matter of everybody getting on the same page. You know, it gets hard because the Public Health Board, the Conservation Board, the Assessor's Conference Board, and I'm, you know, you all have all these different boards. Everybody needs to be on the same page because this is a county-wide thing. This is a statewide thing where Auditor Sand has said this is not appropriate use of public dollars. So, you know, I think, you know, maybe a department head meeting, you know, any way that you can communicate that, you know, this is what is, what needs to happen, you know, maybe specify a specific line item that you want to have those paid out of so that everybody's consistent throughout the county. It is just a matter, I think, of communicating, you know, you as the board of supervisors are kind of, take charge and, and, you know, explain what's going on and the steps that you need to take to to be in compliance.
Can you send us a couple of examples of maybe some of those where their resolution to pay is also part of the agreement of services?
Yep.
So that we kind of have a, I would like to see-
That way you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Exactly, I'm not big on that, so.
Yep, I can, I'll make a note.
We want to do a little coalition with some other counties that are compliant.
Well, we own several of them, so I can give you a variety.
We're not one of them.
But we will be, we will get there, we will get there.
I want to see, again, to simplify this, we change the verbiage to what we've already got. As a board of supervisors, there's our solution. We come together with all the other entities and say, if you're going to, again, like Jim's-
Contract for services?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, I just, yeah, we're not, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So I just think we should think about, just change the verbiage to what we have and move forward.
Well, and, you know, with this too, it is, the Conservation Board is the one that had gone ahead and done this, so we just need to look at what you have and see what all we needed to make sure, and then, you know, if you can distribute that to your other boards and commissions, then everybody has the same verbiage.[1751.30] then everybody has the same verbiage. And then going forward, as long as they have that in place before they provide payment for those services, then you're going to be okay.
So dumb question. So like Conservation, they approve their board minutes on Tuesday, they bring it in on Wednesday, Renee processes it quickly. So she's kind of our only one to stop it if it's not, like, the right documentation there? Is that, I mean, I don't want to put that on her, you know, I don't know. I don't want to ask my question.
Well, I would think that once the departments are all made aware that this is an issue, I would like to think going forward that that's going to be something they're going to be proactive about. And if they're going to want to participate in a not-for-profit service, that they're going to know what the requirements are. So I would like to think that they're going to be proactive in that so they wouldn't put Renee in that position.
There again, if we come up with the example of either what we change our current process to, but our current one doesn't say that it's a contract for services, it, you know, so we need to update those. Yeah.
Give it to everybody.
But I was kind of getting at is that I think the board supervisors are the only ones doing resolutions. And so if the Conservation Board is doing it, I don't know, does the Conservation Board have the ability to do their own resolutions? Or is that just the board supervisors there?
That's the board supervisor thing. But they would be able to approve a policy or an agreement.
So if there's one to be resolution, it would just basically be a service agreement. They would have a different document title.
Different document title, very well could have the same verbiage.
Same verbiage, yeah, right.
It could be all the same, just the title could be different.
All right.
Well, it has to be different anyways because they're.
They'd have to update the, you know, the board as far as that's concerned with the other board, Conservation.
But again, I think as long as everybody's on the same page and the boards understand, you know, what this is and why it is the way it is, because, you know, Auditor Sand has said that this is the way things need to be, and, you know, I just don't think that it's going to be an issue going forward.
No.
So what else do you have for questions, concerns? I know it was a lot.
This was good. You covered it so well.
This was good.
You guys did an amazing job. I'm, I'm very happy. Thank you.
I do have one that, it was talked about quite a while ago in here, but I have a big concern of our legislature. For the last two years, they've tried to take our local option sales tax away from us. So you're auditing our local option sales tax. Okay, what happens if it ends up going through or we lose that? Do you still audit our local option sales tax? Do you audit it through the state when we want some back?
Yeah, what we look at for the state for local option sales tax, we're looking to see that you have a ballot in place, that it was approved by the, the public, and then that it is going into the funds as prescribed. You know, the ballot can say specifically if it needs to go into a specific fund, or if it's for property tax relief, or if it's for projects, that type of thing. So we're looking to see that it was deposited in the correct fund. And then we're testing, and again, testing expenditures, we don't look at every single one, but we'll pull a couple to make sure that it's being spent in accordance with what your ballot says it's supposed to be. So on the state side, we don't get involved with that. The state does the calculation, the state goes ahead and remits your portion of it monthly. But, you know, we're out of that, out of that piece of it.
Because I've asked Rob Sands about that, and he told me he doesn't agree with that money going down to the state level. That's year, that's the county's money.
Yep.
But he's not the only one that gets to make that decision.
Yep.
And I, I think it should stay in the county.
I think it's become a vital part of county budgets. And with all the budget changes that you've had in the last couple of years with the House File 718 and all the changes and cuts, and I think that would be very detrimental to mess with the local option sales tax at this point in time. Because it's become a vital part of the county budgets, and you guys need those dollars.
All over.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It's not just your county, I mean, it's, it's all 99 of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your work, so we're, we're in good shape moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Anybody have more questions? We can call them.
Well, we got to call you.
I don't know how to put it, we'll get to it.
All right, we'll move on to meetings attended.
I had OSEGA City Council meeting last night, and they had their, I'll call it Truth and Taxation meeting, which was its own single meeting like what we did on Monday. Number of people there, number of comments, concerns, House did a real good job of answering those concerns. And then that meeting was done, they went to their regular meeting, talked about, you know, farm treatment plans, set in a public hearing for their budgets. That's, that's pretty much it. That's all I had.
A lot of my meetings got canceled last week due to the snow, so.
Okay, so I attended Farm Bureau Board meeting. They had just gotten back from, a couple of them meet, and the meeting with legislators in Des Moines. They also talked about their membership drive and upcoming activities. They also talked about their, one of them being the grocery cart races that they held in St. Ansker this year. They bumped that around the county, and then after they get done with the grocery cart races, they donate the food to the food banks. So I don't know if anybody, I've not seen it, I wasn't able to, to see it. That was held last Friday. I also attended the North Iowa Community Action Organization meeting. They just completed a community needs assessment that they do every three years. They talked about the fact that the Iowa population had bumped up a little bit, but the nine counties that are served by, by this organization, the population of 65 and over is up, the population of five and under is down, and that the important things in these communities are housing, childcare, living wage, employment, and family-friendly activities in parks was much higher on the list than, than I expected. So a really good report with a lot of information in it for the area. And I think that, oh, and I was at the St. Ansker School meeting last night, Truth and Taxation meeting that was attended by many, but I'll leave that to Mark because he was also there.
So the Iowa Workforce Meeting, they had a special meeting to approve our committee, or our company to do their audit. They had three companies respond, and they got only one to send a quote, so they go on that one, I guess. Had a County Social Service H R committee meeting. They still have 20 employees, they haven't lost any yet. They winding down July, June 30th, it's coming quick, and they're getting rid of some inventory cars and computers and stuff. So that's still not a very pleasant site, I guess. Then I went to the St. Ansker School Board for Truth and Taxation, and maybe, what, eight people there?
Yeah.
They explained it very well, what was going on. And so then I went to the OSEGA School Board meeting, and they didn't explain nothing. So that's all I had.
I had FMCD cat meeting, went to the financial, 25 financials, had an individual online that was going to talk, he was there for, talk about realignment overview. There's nothing. So didn't have anything. And then, community planning, Jill is having another movie night for the three counties. So, and then I did go Saturday morning and toured Maple Heights. Very nice. A little, you know, that they were working on the business area, but she's got one, one that's rented out already. So, yeah, they're, they're pretty nice. So that was it.
So I thought I would mention that one of the things that came up last night at St. Ansker's school meeting was, they talked and explained how their budgets are due before the rest of the budgets and the state budgets are done. And so the proposed tax rate, the, on the information that was sent out was at like 12.00486. They are actually now at closer to 11.83. So, you know, that was, that was a rather important change. And so people, you know, learning that information, and it's hard to explain that they've got to put their budget out, and they can't go over that, you know, so, and they're doing a budget and publicizing long before the rest of the process is done. It's unfortunate it happens that way. I thought I'd add a mention. Yeah, yeah.
Still don't know how much more they're going to get.
Right, and exactly. Yep, we're, we're not done at the state level yet.
Public comments? Any public comments?
I don't know if this is a comment, I'm here with, I guess I would say representing the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I'm here just by myself, they didn't send me at all. I see us as an arm to, to help board supervisors, of course, with ordinances, and we've been looking at the pipeline thing. Maybe I see this wrong, but I see that we have different options available to us to move forward. And in, in an effort to be efficient and effective, I was looking for direction from the board of supervisors about what option they would like us to concentrate our time in every time. Broad, broad question, but hopefully just give you some insight into where we're at.
In regards to the, the pipeline or the wind ordinance, you know, you're also, are we all under both or what?
Maybe, maybe the pipeline.
My, my comment is that I don't feel the board supervisors should be approving something that is a direct conflict with Iowa code because Iowa code says that we can't violate Iowa code. So that's, that's pretty much it for a nutshell for me.
I gave you mine yesterday. And, and mine is that counties have the right to, to protect certain areas within, within their county and within the, the code rights. So there, there are some options that, that other counties have put in place that haven't been, been, no legal suits have been made as far as that's concerned. I'm actually right now more concerned that we update our right-of-way ordinances and policies and, and our fee schedule, which it doesn't have anything to do with planning and zoning. But I think that it's good that you're exploring it. From what I understand, that the, the board is not planning on doing anything until it comes all the way through planning and zoning for, for a hazardous pipeline. Not necessarily just CO2, but the hazardous pipeline.
I'm probably on the same page as Pam, I think we should protect the citizens of the county. That would be through the ordinance.
For me, I'm still open-minded about the whole thing. I listen to Summit Carbon Pipeline, I listen to the residents of Mitchell County. I also look at a lot of emails we all get, and I really don't see a whole lot of progress in any of this. From the ordinances and stuff, there's so many, to me, gray areas, they're setting, they're putting them out there, and they're going, they're getting sued, or nobody's making any decisions. South Dakota shuts them off, they're not going to there. So I, being, like I say, I'm open-minded about it, I try and keep up on all the news, there's a lot. But I guess I don't see it going anywhere. I mean, there's, you know, you talk to Summit, and they're, they're moving forward, what are they moving forward for? Because South Dakota's cut them off. And a lot of counties are spending a lot of time on these ordinances that really are, they're not going anywhere. Some you see that they're, they're, they are, but there's also articles out there that says they aren't. And to conclude, I want to protect our citizens, but I want everybody, just a reminder, there's three people in the state of Iowa that's going to make this decision, this IUC board, and I don't think they're listening to us. Bottom line, you know? So I just, I keep saying I'm open-minded about it, I'm going to continue to listen to Summit Carbon Pipeline people and our citizens. And for your board, I feel for you. Because it's not your every day, like going to your job every day. There's a lot of things out there that you guys, I feel for them. And as one member of the board, we'll just keep, keep listening to you. You guys figure something out, bring it to us, and we'll have to decide what to do. And I'm not sure what I would decide. And like I say, I'm open-minded to all sides, so.
And I just want to mention again that you're reviewing the possibility of a hazardous pipeline ordinance is not implicating anything for eminent domain. You're right, we have no power over the eminent domain that was, decision that was made. So we, we can't affect that right now at this moment in time, and I would guess that we will never be able to affect that, the direction that that is headed.
But Summit's move on eminent domain for state, now they're going to the federal eminent domain.
Exactly.
And it's going to bypass all the states, so.
Right.
They're going to.
So, so, and South Dakota's vote, although it appears like that may have, have been a bump in the road for Summit, it isn't even necessarily just a CO2 pipeline, but other pipelines or other entities that want it to come through our, our county lands. And so from that standpoint, I do, but I understand what you're, you're saying about the eminent domain, but you're reviewing something other than that. Right? And South Dakota's might not be the be-all, end-all, win-all, a sudden.
Rachel's trying to get a step.
Thank you for serving up.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. As I see, no other mayor?
No problem.
You're good? Are you sure?
I've heard enough of her, I've heard a lot of her.
All right. I will adjourn the meeting at 10:58.
Must've been great to be the star of the show this morning.
Thanks for sticking out.
Ever feel like you shouldn't have got involved in that sort of thing?